Let's start. Seems close.
Councilmember, Agency Director, Man Marcus here. Silvio Vice Mayor, Vice Chairman Smith.
Here.
Mayor Chairman Perez.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Do we need to do a vocation?
Yes, Esther, um, Witten Dollar.
Right here.
Okay, good.
Let's all bow and pray to God. Father God, we want to come to you this evening and first of all, thank you and praise you, Father, for allowing us all to live in this great nation. Father, we're so very thankful for the privileges that we have. We're so thankful, Father, for the freedoms that we have. We're thankful, Father, also for being able to live in this fine city. We pray, Father, that tonight's meeting, that you would be with it, that, Father, you would bless it, and that all the decisions that are made and the plans that are made would be in accordance with your will. We pray all this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Vice Mayor Smith, you want to lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Can we pledge right hand and heart? Ready to begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yes, we have a presentation by Sarah McPherson. She's 12 years old. Is she here yet? Great, come on up, Sarah. Sarah's 12 years old. She goes to Armegos School, and she has something to share with us tonight.
Come on over, Sarah. Smile, this is... You look nervous. Come here. Use my mic, okay?
All right. Hi, my name is Sarah McPherson, and my subject today is "What is an American?" Several years ago, a man named Lee Greenwood had a hit record entitled, "I'm Proud to Be an American." This song seemed to stir a web of patriotism across the country. But what is an American? As suggested by Lee Greenwood's song, if you ask what is a German, or a Russian, or a Japanese, you might have some idea of what the person looks like. But when you ask what is an American, there is no single answer or idea of what their appearance might be. As we all know, except for the Native Americans, we are a nation of immigrants. My mother is from Chile. Last month, Matthew Amero spoke here. His mother was from Canada. Before that were Armando Carlos and Carla Chirino, both who have parents from El Salvador. So what is an American? As suggested by Lee Greenwood's song, one has to look deeper to find the meaning of being an American. It goes far beyond skin color, cultural background, or language. We learned in school much about the beginning of our nation, about ideals and principles which were important enough to our forefathers to fight and die for. We learned about those, we learned, we learned about those who knew firsthand what it was like to live without the freedoms that we now take for granted. There are many reasons why people come to this country, but few of them are more attractive to them than the great opportunities for a better life in this rich, beautiful, prosperous land of opportunity. Embracing the values of America is one large part of becoming an American. One of those values is the right of our people to have government of the people, by the people, and for the people. That is where you on this council come in. You have been chosen by the people of this community who have entrusted you the responsibility of carrying out this tradition. May God bless you as you dedicate yourselves to this end. Thank you.
You know, if you need a job in a law firm... Okay, uh, City Manager, Mark Bosidion.
We're here to say a couple of words about our Employee of the Year, Shelley Henson. I'd also like to invite Shelley down, please, wherever you are, and her parents, Bob and Mike, please come down. And I'm going to go through a couple of, about a minute on Shelley, but what I wanted to do first is, the reason I brought, asked her parents to come down, our Neighborhood Watch Program works, and we have engaged citizens, because Shelley's in charge of it, and she treats it as family, okay? It's a family, and she must have had a wonderful upbringing with her parents here, because she knows what it means to be a family, and so does our Neighborhood Watch Program. Going to give you a couple of things about Shelley. One, she's a tireless worker. Unlike Sarah, I have to do this with notes. I'm a little older than Sarah. She has a personal relationship with hundreds of citizens in our community and the deputies. The major story in 2008 was the crime reduction in this city, and there's no one who's more responsible for that than the citizens of this community, and there's no one that's more responsible for getting the citizens involved than Shelley Henson. She was a, first came to us about two years ago, two and a half?
Two and a half.
Two and a half years ago as a crime prevention officer from Palmdale. She was soon promoted to Community Safety Supervisor. She then now supervises a team of 14 CSOs, a law enforcement technician, and two crime prevention officers. She really is a tireless worker. She puts in a full day, and when most of us are at home enjoying time with our families, then she goes and spends time with her other family, which is her Neighborhood Watch family, in their homes, in their living rooms and such. And that personal, that personal tension, I think, came home to me about two years ago. The sheriff's captain at that time, Carl Dealey, and I were out talking about public safety, and at that time, things were not going good, and we didn't have a lot of credibility in the community, and we were trying like heck to tell the citizens, "It's coming, it's coming." Shelley would get up and say the same thing, and they believed her, because she had the credibility, because she's been with them. I am very, very proud to know Shelley and to give her the plaque as Employee of the Year.
You know, Shelley, you don't know this, but how I found out about this is Ron Smith and I went in to see Mark, and we wanted to name you Employee of the Year. And that's when we found out he wanted to name you Employee of the Year. And we had this debate, went on for about a half hour. I lost. But that is the only reason why Mark presented it instead of us. And it really was totally coincidental. I mean, not coincidental. It was truly earned, and it was noticed from two different angles. And certainly your peers, and certainly the people who live in this city, are seeing a huge impact that you're having. And, you know, how often do we have the opportunity to change the way all of us live for the better? And she took that opportunity and just ran with it. None of the marvelous things that have happened in the last few months would have happened without you. Thank you. Thank you.
It's Denmark.
Oh, we already have her.
Oh.
Do you want to say it? He got the award, he doesn't get the picture, too.
I'm going to cry again. Okay, I was not going to cry, because one of my coworkers asked if I was going to cry again tonight, because when I got this honor, a week, it seems longer, a week ago at our employee breakfast, I was at a loss for words, and that's, everyone that knows me, that's not typical of me. So I just want to say thank you to the mayor and the council, to Mark, for all of his support, because he's put up with me on many occasions, especially since he's an SD fan and I'm a UCLA fan. I want to thank Captain Anderson and all my partners at the Sheriff's Station, some of which are in the back, the corps team, and Monty, we work with them all the time, and all the others we work with on a daily basis, and my mom and dad for their love and support. Sorry. Thank you.
Wow, to have a daughter like that, wouldn't that be wonderful? Uh, well, I got a couple, let's say. Forgot, I'm on camera here. While I'm up, this month is the American Heart Month, American Heart Association, what do you call it? Help me out here, Mark. Who are you guys with? Who's with the Heart Association? Nobody's here to get the proclamation?
No, there's no one here. We're going to be mailing it, they couldn't make it.
Gee, you could have told me. And also while I'm here, tonight we're announcing the Citizen of the Year. The Citizen of the Year will be given a check for $10,000 to be used for the betterment of the community, and we will be having a presentation, what, later in the month?
Uh, probably in March.
In March. And the recipient is Paul Chapel of West Coast Baptist College in Lancaster Baptist Church. And going through all of the possible candidates, who we were looking for was the person who's had the greatest impact on the Annapolis Valley in the past year. It started with the Annapolis Valley war on gangs, but more importantly, it's West Coast Baptist College, which has saved the east side economically. We will be going through, are we doing that today? They did an economic, what do you call it?
It's an economic analysis and study of the impact on the community.
And what he's, what, West Coast Baptist College, because of Paul Chapel, has brought into Lancaster's over $20 million a year, which is another example of the true, one of the additional values of when we partner with, with the different churches in the community, they have a huge economic impact. And with that being said, I'm going to turn it over to Vern Lawson, and he's going to tell us about, tell you about our economic stimulus plan.
We've had a little press coverage on this, so I don't think this has surprised anybody. But there is a copy of these available. My staff has these, which might be a little easier to follow along if you have the scorecard. Let me start off by saying, we're experiencing pretty tough times in our town. And I was torn a little bit when I did this presentation to think about, you know, how much we should say. Obviously, the newspaper and every media that you listen to every day is full of negativity, and so I'm not going to go on too much, but I want to give you a couple of just statistics. Today, in the city of Lancaster, we have 1,250,000 square feet of vacant space. Majority of that is in older retail centers. Obviously, there's a role as retailers move up, they vacate areas, and that's nothing we want to stand in the way of, but, you know, we have to make sure that we address much in the way we did with Costco. You know, when Costco left that center, they moved to a new location, they were followed by a Walmart Supercenter, and, you know, the revitalization occurred. Of course, redevelopment's all about that blight. Our contractor's sales tax, that is, sales tax paid by contractors, is off 43 percent. That's four times greater than the state average, obviously reflecting the fact that the city of Lancaster has been more dependent on the building industry than other economic regions. Our auto dealers, if you compare to the same quarter this year versus last, are off 41 percent. That's two times the state average, so showing again, you know, with our economy that's based primarily on commuters, you know, we're in bad shape there. These were statistics even, it was hard for me to believe, after I've looked, you know, been here 30 years, and the national unemployment rate is 7.2 percent. Back in November was the last Bureau A statistics we could get. State unemployment rate, 9.3 percent. The unemployment rate in the city of Lancaster, 12.4 percent. So this recession has had a profound impact on this community. Recent article in the Wall Street Journal indicated that the retailers have decided, instead of reporting to you every month how their sales are going, they're going to stop that. They're only going to talk once every quarter. There's only one retailer in the United States of America making any money, and that's Walmart. They were only up 2 percent over the last month period. We know that our success is directly tied to our business partners. Our economy, our community, will only be as successful as our tax base and as our business. And so let me kind of start off with the direction in this, this presentation. We think that the concept of interdependence that you see here, we really are all tied together. I think maybe you're familiar with the analogy of the birds together flying in this kind of a V configuration, that it's said they can go 70 percent farther than if they flew alone. Obviously, that takes a little leadership. When the bird's in the front, they fly for a while, and then they drop back. We think it's time for the city of Lancaster to take that leadership. I think we've invited a couple of business folks today, and you're going to hear some of the reaction to the presentation, this is the first time they've seen that, but I think they'll also share with you the status of their businesses, and I think you'll see they welcome that assist. This is a partnership. We're not proposing that we get there forever, but we think in this very tough time, which is, you know, practically equal to the depression, that we need to show some leadership. Actually, we've had a long history of creating an nurturing environment for business. This is a graphic that shows you our incubator program. Back in 1984, we started this, and it's the tradition that, you know, we refer to the business bird analogy. Obviously, businesses starting up in incubators exactly the same way as you'd see if you were a poultry grower. Actually, we're now trying to get an additional incubator for downtown that the federal government is looking at spending. Innovation is exactly what we've tried to do with this program, and quite candidly, we've stretched the envelope a little bit here. I'd like to tell you this was all tried and true, and something that, you know, we're convinced absolutely is going to work, but that isn't the case. You know, we've, we've stretched out. This slide talks about a book that is a national bestseller called "The Last Leshure." It's a discussion from a professor from Carnegie Mellon University who's now succumbed to pancreatic cancer. One of the advices, advice that he gave his students is he wanted to see them be the first penguin in the water. There's a lot of risk associated with that if you're a penguin. You know, every time, every day you jump into that water, you don't know if you're going to be met by a killer whale. But his advice to the young people was, you have to take those risks. You have to stretch your neck out a little bit. And so we've got some things in here that we're screwing around, trying to figure out how to make them happen, and, you know, there isn't a manual you can refer to. We think that that innovation is worth the risk, because the reward is going to be an economy that we can all continue to be proud of. Some of us heard the congressman speak the other day, Buck McKeon. He talked about the fact that nationally, our capitalism is based on credit and confidence. We don't have confidence, we don't have credit. And I think it's the same thing in Lancaster. To a great extent, I think, I was making one of these presentations, and somebody said, "Well, what's your goal? To make people feel good about this?" And that is absolutely the goal. The city of Lancaster isn't going to give up. We're going to be here, you're going to be here. Your leadership for a long time has been very business friendly, and I think it's, you know, time that we share that with our existing businesses. We've had kind of different sources of inspiration for this presentation. One of the things occurred, my wife and I took one of our weekend walks up to the aqueduct, and we're walking along, and we looked up, and there was actually an Edison pole, and we saw two ravens and a red-tailed hawk sitting together. And that's, that's uncommon, and we take that walk all the time, you don't see those birds together. And then we realized what was happening is we had a little negotiation going on. Raven had some food, or the hawk had some food, and the ravens were eyeing it and kind of deciding if it was worth the fight. You know, two ravens versus one hawk. And my wife's reaction, of course, was, you know, those birds are starving, and this is the middle winter, they can't find a lot of food. And that analogy is exactly what's happening to our business. I think in economic development, traditionally, we've been supply focused. We act like if we get a new store built, everything's good. If we get a new dealer in the auto mall, everything's good. If we build a new hotel, everything's good. Well, it isn't good. Those hotels are not going to be successful if there isn't demand for their product. The retailers aren't going to be successful, there aren't people to come in and eat in restaurants and buy. The car sales folks aren't going to succeed, furniture salesmen, if the customers aren't there. So I'm trying to change the philosophy, my personal philosophy and the philosophy of our staff, recognizing that economic development isn't just about supply, it's also about demand. And I think, as you'll see, as this program evolves, you'll understand what we're talking about there. Other thing I've got to warn you, though, is that we're not completely in charge of this ship. Unfortunately, and it hurts me to say this, we continue to be in the state of California. The state of California's done a pretty decent job being a scarecrow. It scared off many businesses. I think we continue to take our, our economy for granted. I think that, you know, the state continues to focus on environmental regulation. They closed their Trade and Commerce Agency. We used to have 400 people up in Sacramento that were there if you wanted to open a business. Today, that's gone completely. I'm not too happy the way they treated the redevelopment agencies. You know that we're set to send them a check for $3.6 million in May, and just last council meeting, you approved another $800,000 that they need. We are in a very, very tough environment, and much of the success we've had with economic development has primarily been through your leadership. It hasn't come from the state. That's not the case in the rest of the nation. Wall Street Journal had an article the other day. Many states in these recessionary times are turning to more incentives for businesses. Other governors are recognizing that in tough times, you know, we want to make sure our businesses work. That obviously isn't going to, can't happen in a state that has a $41 billion deficit. We, our philosophy, your clear philosophy, is to be advocates for business. You know, I think that's one thing that, that there's great certainty, and that's not the case, certainly not the case with the 88 cities in Los Angeles County, certainly not the case throughout the state of California. Towards that end, you've been awarded the most business friendly city in the state of California. We just were ranked in the annual Cosmot Study as one of the most cost-effective places to do businesses, or do business. We now have something under the mayor's leadership that's an offshoot of the Business Roundtable to be called the Mayor's Business Climate Coalition, where for the first time, our major employers will be getting together to sit down and talk about the business climate in the city of Lancaster. We want to know what their issues are. We want to develop a dialogue. With an unemployment rate like I talked about, we want to make sure that these companies are happy. We've been pretty lucky so far, meaning most of the companies that we've attracted continue to stay in Lancaster, but we want to make sure that happens, and we want to have a, have an open dialogue. Well, with that, let me get to our program. If you do the research like I've done on, or staff on the stimulus package, you know that it should be timely, temporary, and targeted. Timely, that is, ready to roll immediately, and we're going to try to get this out as quick as we possibly can. Temporary, it doesn't make sense to do a lot of these programs for a long time. Some of them will be as short as 90 days. Targeted, you'll see as this evolves, there are very specific sectors of the economy that we've targeted. I wish we could have targeted more, although we have 21 programs to explain to you tonight. And then finally, demand-driven. I think that's very important. That's, that's a key concept that, that we have to recognize. As far as total cost is concerned, as the paper's reported, the agency, Lancaster Reven Agency, will pay about $500,000, $100,000 for the gift certificate program, $200,000 for the car registration program, $100,000 for the broker's assistance program, and then $100,000 to market this to get, get the word out to everybody. First sector that we want to talk about is merchant assistance. One of the things that we think this is an ideal opportunity to do is to reconnect with the businesses that have supported this city for a long time. There's an old saying about you need to dance with the one who brought you, and I think that's exactly what we need to do with, with our businesses. I don't think we've ever disconnected with them, but I think the tendency in economic development is to give the world away to the new company that wants to come in town, and you, you sometimes forget that the company that's already here, you know, has been committed to you for a long time, so we're going to re-recognize that. The merchants assistance program, there's several programs, and I'll go through them pretty quick, because I promised the city clerk that this wouldn't take forever. The first idea is a gift card program, and this was a borrow from a community back in Illinois, of all places, a small, small town. They and we are proposing that if you spend $300 in the city of Lancaster, that we will give you a gift certificate equal to 10 percent of that, or $30. And that will be able to be spent at any merchant that opts into the program. And how we opt in, we're going to have a letter sent out under the mayor's signature that will invite all 5,000 of our business license holders, so it'll be every business. It won't be just retail or tax-producing businesses. If you're a dentist, or an engineer, or an accountant for that matter, we'd be happy to have, have a gift certificate spent. The whole program will be administered by finance, and I really do need to make the point that this is something I have the pleasure of presenting to you, but this certainly is not our program. This is a program for the entire city of Lancaster, as you'll see as it evolves. I'm delighted with the support that we've gotten from every single department. The town in Illinois actually had 2,000 people stand up and take out gift certificates in the first 30 days. So it worked pretty well in a city of 50,000. We think it could work pretty good in a city of 150,000. A national study indicates that gift certificates are primarily spent 1.4 times the face value, so when a customer brings a gift certificate into the business, he doesn't just redeem the gift certificate, he spends more money. Second program is the vehicle registration rebate program, and I'd like to tell you there's some precedence for this, but that's not the case. This program came out of one of our staff's minds in a brainstorming session, and we're really actually pretty proud of it. City management, a great point today, if you're the city of Choritos, and you've got an auto mall, you're trying to attract folks in from all over the economic region. If you're the city of Lancaster and you have an auto mall, you'd be happy if the people live here, that live here, buy cars here, because we have quite a bit of leakage, and I think Jim Hawes may, may mention in a moment. The program will be pretty simple. If you go buy a new car in the Lancaster Auto Mall over a specified period, 90 days, we will pay your car registration. How will that happen? You'll go, come back into the city of Lancaster, in the finance department, and we'll give you a gift certificate equal to that car registration. Now, you're going to have to go back and spend that money in a Lancaster merchant, but, you know, with the value of cars, car registration equals about 1 percent. You know, it's, it's some real honest money, so I can't think of a single reason that every merchant in the, the city of Lancaster wouldn't want to participate. We're going to, oops, coincide this with regional auto mall marketing in conjunction with the Criminal Justice Commission, which we're actually going to be doing sadly today. If you turn on a local TV station, you get a, a message from another city that's outside of this economic region about shopping local. I know about you, that doesn't sound very local to me. I want to make sure that we balance that up and make sure that Lancaster and Palmdale are the local groups that you shop at. We're going to push forward with a business banner program. This is an example of the banner. This is a direct steal from the San Fernando Valley Economic Alliance. They've been doing this for five years. The nice part about it is that business pays for it. We think it's a way to increase community pride. This slide that everybody can see is actually a piece that is hanging up in the Getty Museum. If you're interested, you can see the back, I think the council can kind of see the back, but it would go up along the major thoroughfares, be put on the Edison Company light poles, which we have a franchise for, and so, you know, it needs to be done in a classy way. But, you know, we really think it's a great opportunity for merchants to further promote their business, and we're looking at institutional funders. The Wayfinding Campaign, we're going to be doing, like, if you get off the freeway in the city of Burbank, for example, first thing you'll see is a sign that takes you to different locations to know where those are. We are thinking with the fact that a soccer tournament held at the Lancaster Soccer Center on a weekend, people have a break between games, they don't know where to go to eat. Why shouldn't they get out of that soccer center and see a sign that directs them back to downtown Lancaster or wherever they can get? When you get off the freeway right now, we tend to take you towards Sierra Highway, and we've got new hotels, obviously, towards the freeway. And then the final component of this is Lancaster Business First. We didn't think it made a lot of sense to talk about shopping local if we didn't do it ourselves, so purchasing and finance are going to do everything they can to, where possible, make sure we buy, buy Lancaster first. The next one on this sector ladder is our hospitality group. This was a direct recommendation that we actually got out of the branding study that was done. They found that the visitors to the city really had great demographics. We want to fill up our hotel rooms, the vacancy isn't what it should be. The vacancy isn't what it should be, obviously, the new hotel rooms, too. We find that the hotels tend to be open on weekends. The business traffic keeps you open during the week, but why shouldn't we do more tourism? To date, about the only tourism we've really had has been through Bob Green's department. They've done a terrific job with soccer, softball, and film, but, you know, that's just the beginning, and we think we can do a lot better. Dan Jacobs will talk about this a little bit. First step in this program will be creating a convention and visitors bureau, and we'll get together all the various stakeholders. There's a concept called ecotourism. That's ecological tourism. A lot of communities now are doing that, and when I look at those communities, they don't have anything ecologically that you couldn't also do in the city of Lancaster, you know, like mountain biking, and rock climbing, and bird watching, and looking at The second leg of this will be financing that convention and tourism bureau. There's a lot of ideas to do that. There's a hotel improvement district. Many cities have considered raising transient occupancy tax, and we're not ready to make that recommendation to you. This is not going to be a temporary program. This is something that will take time to get started, and, you know, it'll be around for a while. We're looking at new events. My staff's all excited about a go-kart grand prix that could be run in downtown Lancaster. This is similar to what the city of Long Beach has done for almost 30 years now, where they bring a ton of folks into town. The goal is, of course, to get people to stay in those hotel rooms, perhaps a farmer's market. The current attraction program that we talk about in here, as I mentioned, has been the parks folks' activity and philosophy for a long time, and it's worked. I venture to say we've got one of the greatest programs there anywhere in the United States. We want to make sure that the businesses support that, and we want to get Bob's support. When he goes to compete for these tournaments, we want to make sure that he's got professional marketing materials. The next leg is our construction program. This is something that I found interesting on today's radio. They're saying that there's about 1,000 contracts today in the state of California that the state of California is considering canceling because they don't have enough money to pay their bonds. So, if you're a contractor, you're not too excited about that prospect. Obviously, the construction money that is spent in this town pumps money into the economy, and it's good for us, particularly now, because, you know, we get better bids. But let me go through these quickly. The first is the capital project in Randy Shop. He's set to spend $29 million this year. Obviously, streets, we've got a new drainage conveyance that's going to be built, which is a big, big project. Liz's shop has got $20 million that she's doing in foreclosed homes, very innovative. That program is putting food into the families of the electricians, painters, carpet layers. I mean, they're just a palpable excitement in City Hall when those people come in and do these bids. Off-the-shelf projects, this federal program, and we didn't include money in here, trying to be conservative, but we think for sure that there'll be federal stimulus money. And then finally, in the Parks Department, we've got three terrific programs that are going to be done. Carter Park, Jelly Park, and the Museum Art Gallery. Museum Art Gallery will transform all of downtown. Jason has brought us an idea for a thing called the green energy investment program, and it sounds like a terrific idea to me. It would tie the cost of green expenditure, like solar panels for your roof, to a bond issue that could be an assessment district, so the cost for doing those panels could be, could run with the property. And I think if you had a great funding mechanism, we'd find a lot of people that are jumped up to do this. Obviously, it has a great residential potential, but additionally, I could see awful solar panels on Michael's, for instance, which will make my job easier. The next segment is developer broker assistance. We, as mentioned, have 1.25 million square feet that we need to get filled up. We thought the best way to do that would be come up with a program to help the brokers, you know, focus on that. And towards that end, we're going to pay an additional percentage if they sell a building, and two extra percentage points on a deal if they lease a building. We know that, you know, as we mentioned before, this is a natural phenomenon that occurs in every community. The smart retailers particularly are out ahead of that curve. Costco's a good example of that. Look when they built their new building, the gas that they have, you know, they captured that. Walmart, same kind of thing. But that creates issues for us, and as a city, we need to step up and take care of that. First component of this is to defer the fees on a certificate of occupancy. The city attorney and I are working to make sure that this wouldn't trigger SB 975, but all this means is that instead of, if you're a commercial industrial project, paying our impact fees when you take out your building permit, you pay it when you get your certificate of occupancy, which could be a year, six months to a year. It won't really hurt us, it won't affect fees that will pay people, but it will allow the industrial, commercial folks to be able to, you know, save the interest carry on this. Broker program, we talked a little bit, but I think the brokerage community has been a backbone in this economy and community for a long time, and they'll continue to do that. And then finally, streamline processing, sort of a recognition that the projects that are going to generate the greatest taxes really need to go to the front of the line. And that's not anything that's new, but something we want to make sure that we get done. Finally, we looked at some new city revenues, and ironically, they became up about $610,000, which would more than cover the cost of this. But some of these are direct steals from other cities. The city of Santa Monica has a give Santa Monica program, we're going to give Lancaster program, and this is an expansion of what they're already doing in parks today. If you want to dedicate a tree in one of our parks, put a plaque, but what these other cities have expanded it to be benches, you can do stuff in the downtown, and, you know, really give our residents an opportunity to participate. Water fountain, street furniture. Branding opportunities, we know that there's tasteful advertising that could occur on places like our bus benches. Somebody said at a meeting today, some cities actually allow you to wrap up a trash can in a park with your, you know, broker, and you want to get your picture out there, it might be worth it. We're, you know, talking through that. Clear Channel Stadium, naming rights, I think Parks has done a good job with that, but we want to extend that, expand that. And then we want to do a new city store with a new brand. We think particularly with Generation X, Generation Y, there's opportunities to have cool clothes, kind of like, and this is just for Mr. Brazigian, the Bearware program that they have at UCLA. If you get one of those brochures, you'll see that there's just almost nothing that you couldn't buy that says UCLA on it. And so, we'll do something with Lancaster. And then finally, an amnesty program, where we're going to waive some penalties from those folks that owe us money if they respond quickly, and we think that'll generate some bucks. Totally, this program adds up to $110 million. And actually, when we started, I was kind of surprised, because, you know, this is, to some extent, some of the stuff, you know, we ordinarily do. I want to emphasize that that's $110 million in economic impact. We didn't throw some kind of acute multiplier on that. If you're in my business and you go to these conferences, you could maybe spend that off two, three, four times. The argument is that if you have a direct economic impact, then that money gets circulated through the economy several times, and we haven't done that. We think $110 million is enough to get everybody's attention. Finally, I want to tell you, we're going to start all this right away, if you think it's a good idea, and this is obviously all contingent upon your approval. It's been a great pleasure presenting this to you. As I mentioned, this is not our program. This is the entire city's, and the department heads have been terrific. I also would like to thank my staff, and in fact, if I can have them stand up, staff here. They have worked very hard, and quite candidly, many of the terrific ideas that you see here came right out of those heads. So, I wanted to acknowledge those folks, and we recognize that so far, it's been fun, but the real work starts, you know, once you pull the trigger, if you choose to. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions, although we've invited a couple of business members to react to this and kind of give you a little background on their businesses. And with that, I would like to introduce them, and we'll answer questions. The first would be Mr. Bob Turner. Bob is the owner of Avon's Furniture since 1988, and obviously, a fixture in this city.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I bought the store from Bud Avon 20 years ago, and we've had a long history in Lancaster, generally been pretty successful. We're still there, unlike many people in the furniture industry nationwide who have long gone. We're happy to be in Lancaster. The store was founded in 1937, moved to its present location in 1958, and we've remodeled the interior several times, and we're really happy with the direction we've gone, bringing, you know, really nice, quality products, and doing a good job in delivery, making people happy. But the last couple of years, things have really fallen apart nationwide for a lot of reasons in our industry. And when Vern started talking about this with us, we're really excited about it, and we're anxious to participate in any of the programs that are approved, from revitalizing downtown. We're at the beginning of downtown, we're all for that. I just want you to know that we're behind Vern, and we plan to be where we are for a long time. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, it's my pleasure to introduce Danny Jacobs. I think most of the council members know him. Dan is the general manager of the Antelope Valley Fair. He's going to talk a little bit about the hospitality aspect, because here's a group, again, who's been doing hospitality for a long time in this town.
Mr. Mayor, city council, and staff, we would, on behalf of the board of directors of the Antelope Valley Fair, we would like to applaud the city council and staff for their efforts to help spur the economy in Lancaster. Furthermore, we are extremely excited about the tourism and convention bureau aspect of this plan. We have long felt that different entities getting together can really make a difference if they have a common purpose. We look forward to working with the city actively in this endeavor, and we pledge our support in whatever way we feel that we can be beneficial to this effort. Thanks.
And then the last reaction will come from Mr. Jim Hawes. I think everybody knows Jim. He's owned the Sierra Toyota dealership for a long time. He's particularly fond of, I'm fond of him, because he's making a major expenditure, expanding his business in the middle of this recession, so welcome him.
What were you thinking? Well, I'm planning for the future. You know, it's, my wife asks me the same thing many times, "What are you doing?" But I really think it's the right move, believe me. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council, for your time. I've had Sierra Toyota for about 15 years. I've been the owner of that business, and we've, it's always been a challenge to keep people here in the Antelope Valley in their car purchases. We lose probably, as a group of car dealers, we probably lose one out of every five to Down Below. They buy elsewhere. That's sales tax revenue that puts cops on their streets, puts firemen in their equipment, and it's revenue that leaves this valley. It's a substantial dollar amount. Last year, I estimated, we lost, when I say we, the Antelope Valley, lost probably $150 million, a little over $150 million in revenues that are taxable sales that went elsewhere. So, it's been a challenge, and when Mark and Vern and some of the folks at the city came up with this plan, we started, I really got excited about it. I think we have an opportunity. First of all, nobody in the industry that I'm aware of, no city is doing this vehicle registration rebate. It's very creative. I, as a dealer, cannot rebate that money to a customer. It's illegal, I can't do that. The city, on the other hand, has the ability to do this and circulate those dollars again and again and again. It's very creative. I love the idea, and I know the dealers up here are in total support of it, and I commend them for their insight into this. So, we're supportive of it. I think it's really going to help if we can capture 25% of that business, 30% of that business that leaves the Antelope Valley and keep it here. That's more policemen on our streets, that's more firemen in our firehouses, that's more potholes that we can fix. And so, we're totally committed to do this, and I think it's only the beginning. We have some other thoughts and ideas on things we're going to do to stimulate business and keep it here. So, I appreciate your support, and I look forward to doing whatever I can do and whatever the other car dealers can do to help get this program running. Thank you.
Thank you. Happy to answer any questions?
Great job.
Thank you very much.
You know, I'd like to thank your staff. This is exactly what we're looking for. We're looking for innovative, risky, bold, to change the way we do things, so that we can, I mean, this thing is going to reap huge rewards, and it takes a lot of courage to do things no one's ever done before. You know, it's easy to copy something that's worked elsewhere, but to be totally creative and innovative like you are on this, I'm actually breathless when I think about the scope of it and the imagination that it took for you to do this. It's, I'm really proud to be part of this. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I want to know who did your PowerPoint, because you've gotten so much better.
We've been practicing.
Would you believe I did it?
Yeah.
No. We believe that as much as you have a UCLA T-shirt. So, can we calendar, you know, a year from now that we actually have an analysis of this to see what worked and what didn't, or six months from now, or?
Absolutely. What you're going to see is, over the next several meetings, rolling out some of these programs, asking for approval, part of any of these programs will be the evaluation mechanism, and as we said, and you've often said, what works, we're going to keep, what doesn't work, we'll change or discard. If I may, Mayor, I'd like to say one thing, too, that I am also very proud of Vern and his staff, but I'm also proud of the city. There's very few cities in California that would provide the opportunity for relatively young, some of you very young, some relatively young, staff members to do this.
That wasn't you, Steve.
That was exactly the person I was thinking when I said that. But to be honest, it's also an investment in the future, because we're going to have economic ups and downs, and we hope that a lot of these staff members are here. This will prepare the city for the next time that this happens, to the economic down. So, this really, the proof is going to be in the pudding, but it's a great start, and it's great to have people that are willing to take risks.
Thank you. Could you, as it comes to us, each individual thing, I want to make certain that the measurement device is included in what's in front of us?
Okay. Yeah, our plan is to have a staff report to you. We're looking for conceptual approval this evening, but a staff report to you two weeks from tonight. And so, absolutely, we'll include that.
Thank you very much.
One thing, one thought, listening to this presentation, and as are both mayors, have said in many venues, talked about shop for cops, and this is really an expansion on that idea. On so many levels, this drives home to our own citizens and our own constituents how important it is that they shop locally. I don't think people realize the dollars that leave the valley when they shop Down Below for the identical products that are available here. I mean, if you buy a Toyota here, or if you buy a Toyota in Santa Clarita, it's the same car. And I'd much rather see my dollars be spent here to put cops on the street, to put firemen in fire stations. This is a great way to get that message out to the community, because I just don't think everybody gets it. This helps drive that point home, that when you buy locally, you are helping your community, you're helping yourself, you're helping your family, you're helping your neighborhood.
Does that mean we can expect you to get involved in some of these programs? Because we'd really like to have you join us.
I'm not even going to dignify that with a response.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, can we take a five-minute break?
We can, thank you. Mr. McEwen, we'd like to see you. Okay, we're back. He said five minutes, but let's be honest, it's going to be 10.
Meeting is back. There's nothing on the redevelopment consent calendar to be removed, is that right?
And, Mr. Mayor, we have a speaker's card for CC 16.
Let's remove CC 16, and I'm going to recuse myself from that, and turn the meeting over to the vice mayor.
Well, let me make a motion for the consent, I'll make a move that we adopt the consent calendar as currently comprised.
I'll second that.
Let's vote. The meeting is yours. Is that what passed you in this week?
Let the record reflect the mayor's left the room and recused himself. We have CC 16. I'll open up, it's not a public hearing, but we have one speaker's card, Mr. Arnold Rodeo. Mr. Arnold Rodeo.
Basically, I have some questions on it, so what I'd like to do is just go through it, and then if you want to discuss it, that'd be fine. Basically, on July 24, 2008, the City Council approved the funding strategy for the undergrounding of the Amargosa Creek channel that runs from approximately 10th Street West on K-8 to Avenue L. And I thought that the covering of the Amargosa Creek, and I was at that hearing, was to facilitate a Kaiser Hospital being built. CC-16, I'm not sure if that's part of that deal. There's a statement that the undergrounding of the channel, from the staff report, will improve the property in order for it to be fully used for development. And my question is, what benefit does the city receive for installing infrastructure for a private developer? At this time, as far as I'm aware, there are no actual plans to develop the site other than some general concept drawings. It seems that this item is simply increasing the value of the property for developers at the city expense. The City Council previously passed a measure for around $1.7 million to underground the electrical lines on 10th Street West from Avenue K-8 to Avenue M. A review of this area indicates that, again, the largest benefactor will be, again, the Amargosa Creek development. Large sections of this area have already been undergrounded by other developers at their expense. The proposal also states that the money is to fund the piece of the property identified for a future auto mall expansion. I'm unaware of any auto mall expansion on the east side. If there is one, then I stand corrected. But if the funding approval is for the Kaiser Hospital section, but now we're being told this is for the auto mall, but it's basically the same approval as of June 24, I'm wondering which way it is. Because my understanding is, this is approval of a portion of what was approved for Kaiser Hospital, and now the staff report says it's for the auto mall. The money should be expended, if ever, when there's actually an approved development ready to begin construction, and the channel should be constructed in conjunction with that development. And where I'm coming from is, if, I understand the concept, but what if you have, you put the channel in, and you go in for the development, and a large tenant comes in that wants additional space, and you can't accommodate them without moving the channel? Many times, channels are shifted to accommodate the building paths and things like that. And I understand there's a master plan, but, you know, it seems limiting to install it before you even know who the tenants are going to be. This is typically how it's done. These channels and stuff are built with the project as it's developed. So, I think the IC-16 should be tabled, and they should, I'd like to see some of these questions addressed before you proceed with it. Thank you.
Okay. I'll, I have a number of answers for him after that, but we have one more speaker's card, and then I'll have a few answers, and I'll let the city attorney, too. Mr. Scott Pelka.
Basically, I'm adamantly against the wasting of public funds for development of the channel, which the property cannot possibly be developed in the next five to 10 years because of the financial strafe of the economy that we're in. If you're looking at the latest numbers, Rite Aid possibly is going to go out of business by the end of the year. Let's see, Kmart, Sears, they're not looking very good. You just closed, Alberston's on the east side of town is going to be closing down. Economically, it doesn't look good for developing anything. So, why would you want to put a cover over the creek when nothing's going to be put there for five to 10 years, minimum? Plus, when you build it, you've got to make it, you've got to clean it out, you know, you're going to have a problem with homeless people making encampments down there. Bad, bad policy. Shouldn't be done. That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you.
Mr. Vice Mayor? Let me cover, let me cover some stuff here, and then I'll let the city manager and the city attorney have at it. Mr. Rodeo brought up some questions, but unfortunately, you weren't here at all the meetings. And the first meeting started back in January of 2005, and that's when the master drainage plan was adopted by the city of Lancaster. And any developer knows that there are a lot of projects that go on that we designated throughout the Antelope Valley, and anybody can pull that master drainage plan. I think the only council member here was Mr. Silvio at the time when it passed, and it identifies different projects for all the drainage throughout the city of Lancaster. Amargosa Creek is just one of many, many ones that are in that project. And part of that policy is that we reimburse the developer for doing the creek. You also missed the auto mall portion of it, too, and we had that in front of the council numerous times. The space being covered, well, once it's covered, you don't have to move it because you can build right on top of it, just like the Target Center. But the main question you ask is, what kind of, what kind of public good is that? If it was just a gift to the developer, it would be a gift to public funds, and that would be illegal. Okay? So, barring, barring any study even, but we did a study, and the study came back by an independent consultant, that we would get, I think it was approximately $2.00 something million dollars a year of revenue. And that's not even counting out the portion of the auto mall, I think, when the whole thing builds out. But above and beyond that, so, over $2 million is about 10 to 12 cops on the street. Beyond that, because of the master drainage plan, fees and taxes have been collected to actually pay for that, or specifically for that. So, if the, the city attorney, he actually is the one that put together the package, or the city manager would like to add anything?
Just, just two additional points. One, I want to be, make sure that everyone's clear. This is an implementing decision. This decision was made in June. This is simply, as we're going out ready to bid the project, we're putting the money in the proper account. Okay? The money that was already identified in June. That's number one. To the point of bidding out now, there's probably not a better time in the last 10 years to bid a project out, both from the sense that we're getting bids that are much lower than engineers' estimates, A, and B, as we talked about 20 minutes ago, economic stimulus for it, too. The decision's been made to do the project, we're moving the money, and now is a great bidding climate, which is why we're bringing, why we're going to be bidding this project out, I think, within about a week, if I'm not mistaken.
Mr. McEwen. Would you, Mr. Pelka?
Yes.
Please be quiet. Don't interrupt the meeting, or you'll be removed. Okay? You had your time. No comments from the audience like that, please. Yes, sir.
Two additional comments. One is that, if you recall, in the agreement that we entered into with the developer of the property, they're required to pay a fairly large percentage of the amount, of the cost of those improvements upon the sale of that back parcel, or within 10 years of the date of the agreement, whichever comes first. So, there is a time limit on that. So, that money will be coming back from the developer to offset some of the benefit that is coming from this development. But beyond that, there are a lot of other reasons why this channel needed to be covered. Part of it was, there was, there is a planned auto mall expansion on the east side of 10th, north of K-8, and that required it, that portion had to be covered as well. And in order to do the covering of that portion and the portion at the, where the Kaiser Hospital will be, you have to cover all of it in between. You start at one end and go to the south end. The other, the other point is that Mr. Rodeo indicated that there were other times when the Amargosa Creek had been covered at the expense of the developers of those properties. He's correct that there are other instances where the creek has been covered. He's not correct that it was at the expense of those developers. In fact, it was at the agency's expense. So, I think with those things and clarifications...
Right. I like that. That brings up another thing, just to add, is that, talking about that that's, you know, something that was done at the other, the other shopping centers, this is something that's common not only in our city, but the city of Palmdale, in order to get their Amargosa Commons, I think that's the name, is it, the Amargosa Commons, oxerly covered part of a creek and did some infrastructure so that they could get that in. But to answer the big question of why not just wait, well, if we're going to do a capital improvement project, now is the time to do it. Because, and Mr. Rodeo supposedly knows the construction business, now is the time that materials are cheaper, construction's cheaper, and a lot of cities are going, pushing ahead for capital improvement projects because the price is almost cut in half sometimes. But, but Mr. McEwen added that, that is correct. In the, in the master drainage plan that was passed in 2005, it says that the developer will be reimbursed for the total amount of the project. In this case, the developers are actually paying a substantial part of it. So, I'll open it up to the council, and, in fact, just to add, it was, Mr. Silvio and I were on here along with Mr. Jeffra and Mr. Hearn's, and it was, it was a 5-0 vote. I think this is a project and a study that the newspaper praised and the public praised, and I don't see why it's a problem now. So, that's my stand on it. Any comments or motions do I hear from, from the council?
Move adoption, CC-16.
Do you have a second?
I'll second that.
Call for a vote. Motion passes with Mr. Mann absent and Mr. Mayor Paris recusing himself. Let the record reflect that Mayor Paris is back on the dais, and I'll turn the meeting back over to him.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, just a little cleanup. I think the record should reflect we didn't do it, that Mr. Silvio is now here. And also, I'll make a motion to excuse Councilman Mann.
Go away.
Do you need a second?
Well, wait a minute.
What?
I don't have any problem with excusing anyone for not being here, but I want to know why before we do it. Now, if he's working, fine. That's a good reason. But I don't think we should just do it to do it. I don't think you should do it to do it for me. I think there needs to be a reason. Is there a reason?
Yeah, Mr. Mann informed me that his work took him out of town, up in Northern California, up to Northern California.
Okay. Then I'll second it. And it's yours. So, do you miss me? We'll now hear from Randy Williams, our Public Works Director. Did somebody violate the P.K. Shaw rule?
It's not. It's not. It's not a dentist. All right.
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers up, I have two back-to-back items for you this evening, so I'll remain standing until the second one is finished as well. The first one is a condemnation action. It's something that we brought to the council in the form of starting that process back in December. You can see on this map, I don't have a pointer, but there's, in the left-hand corner of that tract layout, there's a, two or three different shades of area that need to be condemned in order to make the public improvements and provide the, actually, three different kinds of improvements. There's a street improvement, there's some drainage improvements, and there's also some construction slope improvements that are necessary for that. The ironic thing is that the property on which this area is to be condemned is actually in the possession of and owned by LA County Waterworks. They are a willing seller of this property. It's just that their procedures require that we, the city, or any other city, would have to go through the condemnation proceedings up to this point. And the purpose of this meeting is to give them or anyone else an opportunity to speak on the issue if there happens to be something that is of concern. This is otherwise a pretty routine action that is a requirement for that tract to be developed, and we do recommend to the council the adoption of Resolution 09-08 so that we can continue working with the county to make this condemnation happen, and then the public improvements can be constructed. That's it, sir.
Thank you. Any questions?
No questions, Mr. Mayor. I'll move that we adopt Resolution 0908.
And there's no speaker cards?
No speaker cards.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
So... And it passes unanimously. And I forgot to mention why I recuse myself. I recuse myself because I believe that the creek runs right behind my office, and I'm not sure of the impact with my business relationships with Mr. Gilli and Mr. Visco. So, that's the reason I recuse myself. Okay, second item? This is a much better PowerPoint.
This item is an information item.
Oh, that. Much better PowerPoint.
I'm sorry.
Much better PowerPoint than the last one.
Okay. And actually, I was going to propose that we not go through the PowerPoint in the interest of time, but if the council would like to...
Oh, no, no, no. It's okay. It's all right.
I will just hit you with a couple of highlights from it, not by showing you slides, but rather just to tell you what this is all about. This is just an informational item. It does not require any action by the council. It is, in some ways, a, an early first step, if you will, towards the economic stimulus package concept that Mr. Lawson addressed to the council earlier. And the way that comes about is because, through actions of the city staff and working with FEMA, the Federal Emergency Management Agency, we are actually making it possible for a great number of our property owners to save on flood insurance costs. In 2005, recognizing and having tried for some time to get the FEMA offices to reconsider what then were the flood insurance rate maps that were in existence, the city decided that we would undertake a study to try to demonstrate and prove to them that there had been substantial changes since the previous change to those maps, which occurred 30 years earlier. We were very successful in that process, which we started in 2005. And what I wanted to share with you was that in 2005, there were a total of 817 flood insurance policies issued to property owners in Lancaster by FEMA, and those annual premiums totaled $567,000. So, a substantial amount of money. What we have managed to do for property owners who have, who were otherwise affected by the former flood rate insurance maps is that we have now managed to reduce in 2008 to a total of 431 policies, down from that 817, and down to $356,000, the annual premiums. Now, that all came about because of things like the city's master plan of drainage, the county's master plan of drainage, efforts by both of those entities, as well as by the city of Palmdale and doing the same thing upstream. And all of that has resulted in a significant number of acres and parcels being freed from having to buy mandatory flood insurance. We're really excited about this, not just because it returns almost a quarter of a million dollars, or has already returned about a quarter of a million dollars annually to property owners in Lancaster, but it stands to further reduce that amount by a considerable margin. FEMA does not, when they make a rate map change, they do not notify the property owners. We're trying to take that action ourselves, not to advise them to drop their flood insurance, but rather just to provide them with the facts so they can make the decision on their own whether they need to continue some form of insurance. As a minimum, I should say as a maximum, they would have the opportunity of switching over from the standard policy to a preferred policy, which they would be able to purchase annually for a fraction of the cost of the standard policy. We just thought this was a good news item that we'd like to share with the council. That's why I'm standing before you. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to do it. And I can go through the PowerPoint. Thank you, sir.
Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Williams. New business item number three, Bob Green from Parks and Recreation.
Good evening, Mayor Paris and members of the City Council. Today, the issue is the foundation for the Performing Arts Center that we'll talk about. Staff is recommending City Council approve the amended bylaws of the Lancaster Performing Arts Center Foundation, and that also, the mayor consider the appointing individuals listed below to the Lancaster Performing Arts Center Foundation with City Council approval. In the way of background, the Performing Arts Center Foundation recently adopted bylaws that grant the authority to appoint directors of the board to the mayor with City Council approval. This change will ensure that the Lancaster Performing Arts Center Foundation board is appointed in the same manner as other boards and commissions associated with the city of Lancaster. The following individuals are submitted for your consideration. Former mayor of the city of Lancaster and current president of the foundation, Lou Bozigian, Dr. Inamani Arul, John Carrato, Josh Mann, Berna Meyer, Dr. John Porter, and Mark Thompson. At this time, I remain available for any questions you might have, as will Lou Bozigian, and we're happy to respond to anything you may have.
Ms. Marcus? Mr. Silvio?
One thing I didn't see as I glanced at the staff report was, when they're appointed as a director, is there a length, a term, length of time associated with this?
It's one year.
One year. Correct.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Vice Mayor? No comments, except that I'm glad to see Mr. Bozigian on. I think, what is it now, about 19 years or 20 years you've been doing this? 20 years, and just a fine job you've been doing, too, and glad for your leadership in taking that.
And it's the first time you've attended a city council meeting in how long?
20 years, sometimes.
20 years. Well, honored. And your picture's still on the wall. Now... You know, let us take this opportunity to thank you for the 20 years you've done for the LPAC. We would not have the same theater without you, and we appreciate all your efforts. Thank you, Mr. Green. So, how do we do this? We do two motions, one to do the, approve the changes, or what?
I think one to approve Recommendation A, which is the changes to the bylaws. I'll move to approve the bylaws.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
There's no speaker cards, or is there?
No speaker's cards on either item.
Let's vote.
It passes unanimously. And now, can I appoint now and vote on it now?
Yes.
Okay. Then, I would recommend that we appoint Lou Bozigian. Can I do him as chairman at the same time? As the chairman and as a sitting member in Palm, it's Dr. Arul, I can never pronounce her first name, Joshua Mann, Berna Meyer, John Porter, and Mark Thompson. I guess I need a motion and a second.
I'll move that we adopt those members as recommended by the mayor.
Is there a second? Was that, did I hear you correctly? You left off John Carrato. You did hear me correctly. I left off John Carrato. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Let's vote. And it's three, four, three, well, Paris Smith and Marcus for it, and Cilio against. It passes. Moving on. City manager, any announcements?
You may have some comments, you and the vice mayor, on the juried art show. I just want to thank staff for a wonderful evening. It's great to be around creative people, me not being a creative person. It inspires me. You're doing great stuff. You really are.
We actually have a lot of staff that are very creative, and they do some great work, and they're really motivated. And frankly, the support we get really makes a difference, makes it easier for us to do those type of things, and Mark creates a good environment for that. It works really well. It's a good team that the city has.
I agree. City clerk, any announcements?
Ladies and gentlemen, this is the time for public business from the floor for non-agendized items. You'll find speaker cards at the back of the council chambers, and we ask that you fill the cards out completely and clearly so that, if necessary, the council or city staff can get in touch with you later. We ask that you be courteous of the three-minute rule. When you come to the podium, you'll see a green light come on when you have three minutes. The yellow light comes on, 30 seconds left, and the red light comes on when your time is up. We ask that you be courteous of this so that it gives other people their chance to talk as well. State law does prohibit the city council from taking action on any items that are not on the agenda, and your matter will be referred to the city manager if necessary. Thank you.
Okay. Ann Venino? Could I pronounce that right?
You did. Thank you.
Okay.
Good evening. My name is Ann Venino. I'm a strategic consultant to the High Desert Region Green Jobs Initiative, and I'm here at the request of our executive director, Linda Jones. We invite the city of Lancaster to become a stakeholder of the initiative by putting a resolution on the agenda for a meeting of the city council. The High Desert Region Green Jobs Initiative is a strategic, demand-driven initiative that links economic and workforce development to advance the green economy in northern Los Angeles and San Bernardino counties. The initiative will be achieved through public-private partnerships and guided by a collaboration of the private sector, government, community-based organizations addressing career development and job training, labor, educational institutions, youth, and under and unemployed adults. We have provided background information on the initiative and a sample resolution for your consideration. We have met with Mayor Paris, city manager Mark Bozigian, and Luis Garabé to discuss the initiative, and we thank them for their time. The objectives of the initiative are to position our high desert region strategically on both a statewide and national scale to attract and retain businesses within the new energy economy by ramping up the creation of a skilled labor force over the next three to five years through green-collar job training and opportunities for entrepreneurship, to bring business, labor, education, government, and community-based organizations together in public-private partnerships, and place our region in a prime competitive position to reap the benefits of the new Federal Green Jobs Act and other state and federal dollars for workforce development, to use green jobs to create positive pathways for youth and under and unemployed adults, to collaboratively develop curriculum for regional green jobs training. I thank you for your time and look forward to partnering with the city of Lancaster. We are available to the city manager or anyone in the city to provide further information on the High Desert Region Green Jobs Initiative.
Thank you. Any questions?
No questions.
And then we have Heather Thomas Brown.
Good evening, Mayor, and city council members. I'm here tonight on some issues that are not very happy ones. I grew up here, okay? My father is on the Walk of Honor, Richard Thomas. He was a test pilot. I grew up here. I've lived here my whole life. I used to think this was a safe place. That's a total facade. My car was stolen by the city. I understand that the city's position is that I have an issue with the doctor who owns the property next to me. You know, I'm sure there's a lot of felons in prison that would like to, you know, push it off on somebody else, too, but the fact remains is the code enforcers have the last word. I was sexually assaulted by a police officer in my home on a night that I called the sheriff's department for a domestic violence restraining order violation. The officer came back 30 minutes later, trusting the police officer. I let him in, and, well, I reported it to an officer, nothing was happened. I reported it to a supervisor, nothing happened. I went as far as the watch commander, and they told me that the sheriff, they had no record of the sheriff being at my house, and I said, "I'm sorry." My response was, "I'm sorry, I didn't know they called that kind of thing in." He's been to my house several times. Anyways, that's neither here, nor there. I understand the intimidation factor and what I'm up against, but the chloramine in the water is just baloney. I mean, you guys need to know that this stuff is bad, okay? I've gone to all the little water meetings, you had a civil engineer explaining it. He, why a civil engineer? Why not a marine biologist? Why not somebody that understands chemicals, not someone that builds buildings? He also informed us at the water meeting that they spent $8 million. They've already tooled the water processing plant with $8 million. Well, I did a little more research, which I'm really good at, and I found out that they already have put the ducts in to add the ammonia to the water, which is a chemical reaction between rocket fuel and ammonia, just in case you guys want to know. I have all that with me tonight. You know, this is highly toxic stuff, chloramine. Okay, it persists. It's more persistent. I understand that. It's more persistent. It doesn't kill E. coli virus, and it doesn't kill the rotavirus. If you have a compromised immune system, which half of this civilization in Lancaster does, asthma or diabetes or something like that, this is going to kill you. This chloramine is going to kill you, okay? The vapors in the bathtub are going to get you. This is the last straw. So, basically, I want to know is, who do I direct the lawsuit towards?
Well, you know, there's a way to...
Can you see why I'm a little upset? This is like the last straw. You get me in my home, you get me, you take my...
You asked my question. Do you want me to answer it?
I'm sorry. Yes, go ahead.
First of all, in regards to the issue with the sheriff's department and one of the deputies, the captain's...
On duty, in uniform.
The captain is here, and the captain is going to make certain that that is investigated.
Well, I reported it to the watch commander.
Okay, now you reported it to the mayor, and I'm telling you that it will be investigated, okay?
Okay, thank you.
As to the chloramines in the water, we're still in the middle of investigating that, and I'm not sure that I disagree with you.
But they've already spent the money, taxpayers' money, to put the ducts in.
But the chloramine is not in the water yet, and if there's something we can do, once we have made a decision as to whether or not we should do anything, then we will do it. But the jury's not in yet.
Okay.
But I can tell you that I am equally concerned about that.
Right.
I'm not sure that that's the way we should be going. I don't know what the rest of the council thinks about it. At some point, we will vote on how we should recommend the Water District to proceed.
Right, and Adam, the civil engineer that you had come and speak to everybody?
Wait a minute, I didn't have anybody speak to anybody.
Well, whoever did, A.V.A.C., whoever.
Okay, well, let's be clear who we're talking about. You know, Water District 40 is the county, and it's run by the Board of Supervisors.
Right.
You know, our ability to influence the Board of Supervisors is not substantial. I mean, all you have to do is look at the Section 8 that gets dumped into this city to know that our ability to influence them is not substantial. We have one Board of Supervisor for this district, and that's Mike Antonovich, and, you know, oftentimes, it's a four-to-one vote. But we were looking into it. We will make a decision as to what recommendation we should make, and I don't think your concerns are unfounded, okay?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
You know, I'm not looking for a skirmish. I'm just...
I know.
I'm eternally vigilant, and, I mean, after all, isn't that the price of lifting?
Hey, every time I stood up there, I was, I was foot to be tied to. I'm not saying you are, but I'm saying that the adrenaline's pumping.
Right, thank you.
I appreciate that. Now, did we let Mr. Pelka violate the P.K. Shaw rule and come up and let his adrenaline pump?
Only if we can rename it the Pelka Rule.
But Pelka's violating the rule. Okay, from now on, I want it on the form or wherever, I want people to have noticed that their cards have to be in before the first speaker speaks on that topic, okay? And if it's new business or whatever, you know, what I don't want is, and I think that that's a reasonable restriction on how we do this. But, Mr. Pelka, come on down. I, you know, I'd send a car for you if you couldn't make it. I really look forward to you coming. And I know how close we are.
Well, I heard about that. You said you wanted to send a car down to my house to get me up. I don't think so. I can drive. First of all, that was a very, very cheap-ass shot you made on Mr. Cilio, from Mr. Cilio a little while earlier.
Why don't you try, why don't you try to not use that type of language, okay?
Well, you know, it's exactly what it is. It's something I'd expect from a attorney of your caliber. You know, I just, you know, just despicable, you know. To get back to what I was going to say...
You know, I get to comment on that now. You sure you want me to comment on that?
I want you to go right ahead.
You know, all I can tell you is that there are three council members here that work extremely hard, and it is frustrating to me when everybody doesn't pull their load. And I do have a right to comment on it. In fact, it would be inappropriate for me to comment on it in private. So, what else would you like to discuss?
We do that in private, anyway, because I hear about it from other people who talk...
Well, I'm surprised that we have friends in the same circles, but go on.
I've talked to a lot of people. You'd be surprised, you know, friends of yours, friends of mine. Second thing is, Mr. Smith, when you rudely told me to shut up back there, you had me thrown out. Basically, I was going to ask that $2 million you said was going to be going back into the city's coffers.
Wait a minute, you can't talk about something that I recused myself on. You have to do it then, because it would be...
I was trying to do it then.
Is it even legal for him to do it with me in the room?
Excuse me, I was...
Wait a minute, hold on. We're going to follow the law here.
Okay.
Even you don't get to violate the law, okay?
He can certainly talk about something. There's no action that is going to be taken, so that's, you're only prohibited from taking an action.
Okay, well, Mr. Smith very prominently told me to, you know, shut up or I'd be thrown out if here...
How come that always happens to you?
I know.
It doesn't happen to anyone else.
You know, I don't know why this happens to me, but, you know, you guys seem to have it against me.
No, I told you, I'd send a car for you.
If you want to send a car, you go right ahead. I don't know, is it going to be at your expense or the city's? You know, but anyway, Mr. Smith, when he proceeded to tell me to shut up, I just was wondering why, or at one point, with this $2 million that was supposed to be coming back to the city in revenues and stuff, when this was going to take place, the city's spending more than, you know, almost $5 million bucks to cover over the creek, and you said it's going to be cutting $2 million back. I'd like to know when this is going to happen. You know, I can't see it happening for at least 10 years, you know, at all. So, that was the, the second thing. The third is the chloramines, you know, bad stuff. I've done a lot of research myself. It's not good. It's not good.
Finally, we may agree on something. I'm not sure.
Besides, but I...
I think I'm leaning that way.
Besides, well, I hope you are. Pinhole leaks in the copper plumbing, the stress it does on poly弊 piping, not to mention the protein that it removes from your body, which causes, promotes Alzheimer's disease. There's a lot of, a lot of negative...
I'm not sure you're not right. Meaning, I tend to think that the evidence is weighted towards what you're saying in regards to that. But, you know, let's get all the facts in, and we'll make a decision.
And I think you, Mr. Cilio, an apology.
Well, sometimes we're just going to have to agree, disagree, Mr. Pelka. I'm sure that's a surprise, but... Okay, is that it? Moving on. Council reports or comments?
We don't have an official report from the A.V.T.A., and I think...
Hold on, hold on. Let's keep it in order. Go ahead. Councilmember Marcus?
Yes, sir. Talking about the chloramines, I was here for the meeting that was held in Adam O'Reekey, I think it was, the gentleman who did the presentation. And the bottom line that I understood was that the chlorines to be mixed with charcoal was every two months going to cost the consumer about $40-some dollars. If the water was going to be mixing the chlorines and the ammonias, which makes chloramines, it's about $9 every two months. That's what I understood. Also, the bottom line was that Mr. O'Reekey said that they would survey the customers to see what the customers would like to do. In my opinion, if the customers want to pay the extra money, then maybe that's what they need to do. So, I'm still waiting for the other shoe to drop to find out what they're going to do, is to survey the customers. I haven't gotten anything in the mail, so that was on that. And the other one was that maybe all of us, including Mr. Pelka, should join the no cussing club. There's a young man named McKay Hatch that started a no cussing club because he's a junior hire, and he got tired of all his friends using foul language all the time, and I joined, and I've suggested that several staff members join. And so, I think it would be an awfully good idea, Mr. Pelka, that, you know, maybe you could join. You can join online. It doesn't cost anything.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute. I know that she directed that to you, but, you know, let's follow the rules here. You cannot comment from the audience. Sorry. Mr. Cilio, you have anything to add? Are you joining the club? What?
I would like to join the club, but I'm not sure that I would last more than a day.
Is that for the cussing club, or?
Yes, that was. It's a problem. Fortunately, I don't do it in public meetings. Sanitation District did meet last week, and there was nothing out of the routine items other than some contracts going towards improving sanitation plant in our city. Brings us another step forward towards our recycled water project, but nothing out of the ordinary.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The A.V.T.A. just had a small visioning meeting that we're trying to, we hired a consultant to sort of work out some communication things in redeveloping the J.P.A., and that's about all we had. It was, no staff was there really from our city, so that was about it.
Good. It's been a great week in the city. We had the economic stimulus plan. We had the sheriff's department designate us the research and development city for the county, which is a huge thing. Mark's giving me signals. Well, you can speak. Well, what that means is, most if not all of the new technology, new methods, new ways of increasing public safety will be tried out here first. It gives us a huge technological leap because we will be getting a lot of technology, some we have to pay for, some we don't, and it also gives us a license, really, to do innovative things that other agencies might attempt to block us otherwise because it is research and development, meaning it's experimental. I'm really excited about this. I think that with all the things that we got online coming our way, this is going to be the model of mid-sized cities on how to increase public safety. The goal of three...